Hi, welcome, welcome. Good to see you. It's always good to see. She'll be back. Hello, Michelle and Caroline. I can't see you, but I see your beautiful kitty. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, welcome, those of you that are gonna actually watch the video. We had several people that registered but aren't here. And one of the parents definitely will be on their way back. It looks like they probably had to restart their computer. But welcome. My name is Presley Tada Maria Cuyanos, and I'm the principal of St. Raphael's School, and I'm also Scholey Academy manager of the Tutoring Center and the Center for Students with Learning Differences. And with us, we have Dr. Erin Moulton. And she wears many hats in our school. She's an assistant to the principal of SRS. Plus, she teaches several courses in lower school liberal arts, Russian. I'm missing something.
Yeah, liberal arts and Russian.
And creative writing. And creative writing. And so, we're here tonight. This is just a town hall gathering, nothing too formal. But rather, I'm just gonna do a quick overview of the academic year twenty-three, twenty-four of what our offerings are. We're very excited because our instructors have put a lot of time, effort, love into creating this program and these various classes for our students. Of course, we have our tried and true, which is our liberal arts program. And then we also have our language and catechism program too that fall under that category. And now we also have a rotating basis of electives. So that's what we're gonna be covering today and then answering any of your questions, which we're happy to do. Dr. Erin, did you wanna add anything?
Not right now. I'll just listen in and answer questions as needed.
Excellent. Alright, so our academic year twenty-three, twenty-four is shaping up to be wonderful. As you can see, we had preview week this week. And open enrollment happens on the twenty-fourth, Monday, nine AM. Now, we always tell families, if there's a particular section of the class that you are looking for with the time, it is important to register early. So, always register early if there's a specific timeframe you have to stick with. Of course, if you have any questions or concerns or comments, you can always reach out to myself or even Dr. Erin, and we can help you along. So, our courses are set up as follows. And I'm just gonna open up the curriculum map. Our main courses are the liberal arts, our language, and then, of course, catechism. On this specific map, you will see the liberal arts and catechism. Each level of our liberal arts is on a two-year rotation that is unrepeatable. We do this mindfully. As we know, students grow at their own pace, but we also know the importance of setting benchmarks for students to reach as well. So, we do have everything from age five kindergarten all the way up to seniors in high school. Same thing with the catechism. We start in level three. And then we do end in what we call the Senior Patristic Seminar for Seniors that focuses on early church fathers. Our liberal arts program includes reading, writing, rhetoric, natural science, and catechism. Always, everything that we teach is through the lens of orthodoxy. All of our teachers are orthodox and they're members in good standing with their Orthodox jurisdiction church. And they are devout to not only teaching our children, but also to the faith. In addition, the other tried and true, as we mentioned, is is what we see here, which has to do with languages. Here, you can see the curriculum map for Greek. We have two tracks. We have what's known as the full track where students could start as young as eight years old, grade three, and work all the way up into senior year. Or if they're just now starting, we have an upper school track that begins at ninth grade and then works their way up as well. Ultimately, this course and this course is the same. And students end up in the same place, just in different tracks. We also have similar oh, well, I thought that was there, but it's not. We also have a similar track for Russian. And let me find it unless you have it really quick, Dr. Erin.
Um, let me find it. Yeah, we did. It came. We had a little website problem and it just yeah, we're gonna have to re-add it.
Yeah. Oh, maybe I found it. Hold on, let's see. Is that it? Yes, I found it.
Okay.
There we go. So then, when we look at our Russian program, again, we start out as young as age eight and then work our way all the way up to high school seniors. And this program has grown a great deal. And Dr. Erin can speak on that as well. So, our tried and true courses are now, of course, connected to our electives. And we have several electives. Our electives are done on a rotating basis, the same thing as our liberal arts program. And so, you will see that we have various music and art for the younger levels. We have fundamental of art with a focus of iconography for K-two, three, five. We also have general music recorder and liturgical music appreciation. We have poetry and we have creative writing novels and Arabic, and that's for our lower school program. Now, for our middle school program, we open up a little bit more. Caroline, what grade are you in or how old are you?
Caroline's a freshman right now, so.
Okay. Alright, we're getting there. We're getting there. So, when we come to the middle school program, which is grades six through nine, you can see that we have, again, the Greek, the Russian. And then, in addition, we have the liberal arts program. The liberal arts program is split into two. We have children's classics. And then this coming year, although that's not correct, will be British classics. We just finished American classics. So, when we look at, and this would be a class that she would go into, when we look at the course offering here, you will see that we read several books within the context of the year. And within those good and great books, we teach our scope and sequence of reading, writing, rhetoric. My brain. Reading, writing, rhetoric, natural, natural science and catechism. And so, all of that's involved in this, and it's laid out throughout the year. Whoops, where am I? There we are. So, she would definitely fall under this this grade eight through nine here. And then that would set her up for then what is to come within the upper school, which is, of course, level six, level seven, and then level eight. But before we get to that, in addition to our tried and true, we have a lot of poetry, literature, and writing. We have several poetry courses that are being offered. We have Byzantine chant right here and Carpathian Rusin chant. We have iconography, music and art and theater. And so, all of these are really fruitful to add to our tried and true. When we get into the upper school, of course, we do have the classes. This year would be the Roman year. This is in a two-year rotation. The following year will be Greek. We have the level seven classics of Christendom, and this is our new class, Modern Classics of Christendom, which talks about the modern plight of the sixteenth century and beyond. We have catechetical humanities. If students wanna learn about the saints, we also are gonna be offering a women's saints class, but it's not quite ready to be posted. We have a couple of book studies on Saint Nicodemus of Vienna, Saint Maria of Paris, and then, of course, all of our Greek programs. Catechism, Russian, Arabic, literature, chant, iconography, theater, and even a class in science and orthodoxy, astronomy and the Holy Scripture, which is being taught by Father Michael de Haven. In addition to all of these courses, we also have a small collection of continuing education courses for adults, for parents, anyone who would like to take it. And those are located here, and they parallel and mirror our courses in the upper school, but they're actually for the adults, the parents that may want to take them. So, that's everything that we offer in a nutshell for SRS students and families. In addition to everything else that we actually put on throughout the year, book studies, family night formations, we have a very strong community in which we get to know each other at a very personal level, even though we are teaching and learning online. So, before I ask about any questions, Dr. Erin, is there something that you want to add to that?
Um, no, I think that's a great overview of who we are and what we do. So, and I know we have some people who will probably be watching the recording, so.
Yes.
You know, that's that's in a nutshell, what we have. So, I think since we have such a small group, Michelle, we can just field every question you have if you'd like.
Yes, we're all yours. You and Caroline's.
Okay, I'm having trouble with the mute there.
That's okay.
Um, we we got the email this morning and we just decided to pop in. We didn't have any, like, super big questions. We just wanted to see what you were presenting here. Right now Caroline is in the iconography apprenticeship one. So, she'll definitely be doing the the next year of that. So, we wanted to see about other things that we could add to her schedule. Oh, she's in the Byzantine chant too, so.
Oh, very good.
So, we're just looking at expanding. This is our first year of online stuff, so we were looking at expanding next year to doing some more stuff. And wanted to see what you had to offer.
Yeah, for for her level, the British classics is rigorous. And I think it would be a good, you know, challenge for her in in the the level of deep discussion that the students have in that class regarding the various themes that we find in British history. So, I think that would be a very good class for as as far as a liberal arts class. It meets three days a week. And so, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and that frees up, you know, every other day. But again, that that course covers reading, writing, rhetoric, soft nature and catechetical studies, including, you know, speeches and things like that. So, she's gonna get a nice overall course that hits on everything holistically.
That's very cool.
Yeah.
That's very cool. She is very literature-minded, so I think she would enjoy that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I've I've really enjoyed teaching that up until a couple of years ago, but it is really a fruitful two years. And even if the following year she takes American classics, again, it's very rigorous. And there is much to be gleaned from that. And even with that, we have them write a research paper at the end of the year. So, you know, there there is a great deal to learn along with, of course, the conversations and everything that we do have.
Very cool.
Caroline.
Oh, she there?
She's here.
Questions, Caroline?
Um, I heard about the astronomy and the religion one, and I was really looking into that too.
Good. Well, Father Michael de Haven, he is an excellent pedagogue, as Dr. Aaron would say. And he really has a great interest in this, and he's really gonna use the Fathers of the Church and also the biblical scripture that talks about the various astrological things, just like, right? The Star of Bethlehem. And he's gonna kind of do an overview of that. So, it seems like it's gonna be a very interesting class.
Yeah, I have him for a different class in school.
You have him in German?
Uh, no, I have him in a in a science class, I think.
Oh, okay, very good. Yeah, very good.
Awesome teacher.
Yes, he is. He's a very good teacher, and we're very glad to have him come to St. Raphael's School. He'll actually be teaching catechism level four, five, six in that five o'clock time zone. And then he's gonna be teaching the astronomy course. And I'm missing one more. Oh, the saints' courses, the Synaxion of the Saints. He'll be teaching those too. So, yeah. We're excited to have him.
It'll be really fun, yeah.
It will. It surely will. Dr. Erin, I'm sorry, we I had interrupted you. I'm sorry.
Well, now I have to remember what I was gonna say. Oh, I know. So, you know, there's there's lots. I'm super excited how much diversity we continue to add to our curriculum. So, I guess, you know, as you're thinking about next year, I think, you know, going ahead and jumping into liberal arts is is a great option to kind of round out what you're doing. But depending on what your whole picture is of how you do school, you know, and if she's doing chant and and iconography, you could also opt to just do a couple of different electives, which is what I've noticed. We have some families doing too. You know, we have some who do liberal arts plus some electives. We have some that do catechism and a few other electives instead. And so, there's a lot of ways you can slice and dice it. Ninth grade is, I'm gonna plug, ninth grade's a great time to start foreign language, so. So, Russian would be fun if she wanted to do that with me. Honestly, the the students, I would say, who are most successful in that class start in ninth or tenth grade. They have plenty of time to kind of, you know, if they want, stick through it for three or four years and really build their skills. I have had a few who start a little before ninth grade, but it's it's pretty challenging. So, I really think ninth and maybe eighth is probably, you know, the earliest. We really wanna go on that one. But you can do the same with Greek and actually with Arabic too. So, you know, it's it's good timing to start adding that in. And I don't know, that first year Russian class, they're super fun. They get to know each other. They they're right now, they're working on these final projects where they have to write a dialogue. And they were working on them today. I gave them ten minutes in class today to get in their groups and break out rooms to do a little work. And one of them, they called me in to ask me, they're supposed to only use Russian that they know and not just go like off the beaten path, but every once in a while they need a vocabulary or something. So, they called me in to ask me how to say denim couch.
Denim couch?
Yeah, some whatever they're writing. So, a lot of what they've learned this year is like talking about themselves, their families, their homes, the rooms of their house, their furniture, right? It's like that early kind of thing. So, they're writing something hilarious about someone having a jeans, like a blue jeans couch or something. Anyway, they had me laughing so hard today to wait and hear what their dialogue, their little skit is about. So, it's a fun group. I mean, we do, we do. They're actually using a university curriculum, but we just use it at a really slow pace. So, we we spread it out over three years, essentially. What would be two semesters at a university, we do over three years of high school. But which is appropriate, because at the university you'd be in class for a class like this, you'd be in five to seven hours a week, and we only have you for two hours a week. So, it's totally, it's totally good pacing. But so, there's there's some rigor to it, and we certainly cover a lot of our church and our culture, but yeah, they also have a lot of fun too. So, I I enjoy seeing them learn to play around with with fun, fun things too. So, it's a nice mix.
I agree. There there's a nice balance of, you know, putting piecing together a a curriculum that suits every student's needs. So, huh, there's one more person?
Oh, that's Kyra.
Hello, welcome. I hope you can hear us.
Hi. Took me a while.
Oh, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Welcome, welcome. I'm Presley Tada Maria, principal of SRS, Dr. Erin Moulton, our friends, Michelle and Caroline, and now you make our group full, here. So, we just.
Sasha's mom. Sasha, right? Do you have Sasha in Greek or no? No, she's she's in catechism with Basil. I knew she was in one of my son's classes, so, and she's in liberal arts with me, so.
Very good. Well, we just went over what we're offering this year. Sasha then is what? She's a nine, ten?
Yeah, so she's turning ten June thirtieth. She's, so she'll be fifth grade. So, I'm hoping to enroll her in liberal arts three again for the second round. And as well as catechism, she's doing New Testament now, so she'll be doing Testament. And possibly poetry.
Yes, I love this.
Would love it. She is just all over the poetry. Well, you guys know she's been submitting her work.
Oh, yes. And she she was a big hit last year at Open Mic Night. She was such.
Wait, that no, that wasn't Sasha.
It wasn't Sasha?
Year. Yeah, I think you're thinking of maybe Evelyn.
Oh, no, Seith. I was thinking of Seith.
Oh, Seith. Yeah, 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 yeah. But Sasha has written so many beautiful poems.
Well, then I expect her at Open Mic Night this year.
She really has. She's written beautiful poems.
Well, we're excited. I'm actually excited about that poetry class because I actually wrote the curriculum. But I mean, I'm not teaching it. But you know, it the the book that we're using for that, I don't know if you looked at it. It's such a wonderful book. I think, you know, a lot of people don't know about this because, you know, it was it was put together in nineteen eighty, I think, eighty-something. But this book here, The Random House Book of Poetry for Children, is excellent. And all of the pictures within this is by the artist who did the Frog and Toad series. So, I just loved it. And so, the whole program is based upon that. And that's why, of course, we affectionately called it Poetry Explorers, Words, Pictures, and Writing. Because it's really about looking at those pictures, understanding the poetry, digging deep into it, and then writing poetry yourself. So, I'm really excited about the students who are gonna be taking that. Makes me and Caroline wanna take it, right?
She was just looking at that book going, oh, my goodness.
It's so fun. I used.
It's a nice book for all ages.
Yeah, when my kids were younger, we, and I really should return to it, but you know how life goes. But we used to do weekly tea time with poetry. We would have like a special snack and just read aloud. And that was one of our favorite books to read from. And the pictures are great, and it's just a nice collection. It's
It really is.
Really nice selection. So, it's gonna be super fun. I'm jealous. I taught poetry this year. I'm gonna do novel writing next year because so many people are wanting it. But the following year I will return to my Lost Words poetry class because it was such a delight, and I want to be able to repeat it. So, as kids come through, we'll we'll keep doing the Lost Words as well, so.
Yeah, we like to do a rotation. So, you know, so that every year it comes through back around. So, students aren't, you know, taking the same things, or if there's nothing available for them. And also for that age group, Kyra, we have new. I love this, by the way. I don't know if parents are gonna love me for this or go. Hi, but one of the transformative things that I remember as an elementary student is the recorder. So, we have a musician, Mrs. Sarah Marshall, and she is going to be teaching Recorder, General Music, and the Loud of Orthodox Hymenography. And so, I'm very excited about this because this was really formative for me as a third grader, learning and jumping into music. So, we have that. And of course, you know, I ask for parents apologies from now if the noise is a little too much, but it's good noise. It's joyful noise, right? And then we do have pre-iconography courses for K-two, three, five, and then, of course, liturgical music appreciation, which is also taught by Mrs. Marshall. So, we have several things in the lower school that we kind of have filled out. Our intention was to really make a robust program to add to our tried and true, which is, you know, our liberal arts, our languages, and our catechism. And then offer these supplemental enrichment opportunities for our students.
I did have, I did meet with the parent today who said, I wanna put my child in that class, but I'm pretty nervous about the recorder.
It's a rite of passage. It's a rite of, for both parents and students.
I actually have the kids playing the recorder now. We're doing it on our own, and I used to play the clarinet and I taught myself the flute. So, I mean, I can figure out the recorder. Right. But it's not, it's it's really not so bad. Once they get the hang of it, it's really kind of cool, and they're learning it together. So, they're playing little duets now and and having fun with it. Yeah. We can't unfortunately do any Thursday classes because I think we're gonna send them to a farm school on
Woo.
Thursday.
Nice.
Yeah. So, I we'll see if it works out, but that's our intent right now, so.
So, you heard it here, parents, that it's not so bad. Quote-unquote, Mrs. Flores.
Yeah, it's not, you know, I it's so rewarding to make music together. I mean, I my kids, my kids really are musicians despite me. It's their dad gives it to them, and I pay for lessons, but they just like it's such a joy to me. Just today, I've given them most of their school time off this week for Bright Week, other than their St. Raphael classes. And so, while I was teaching today, they were in the next room with the guitar, singing songs together. And it's, I mean, there are things that are such a joy to do as a community, you know? And I I'll say this about our online classes and homeschooling. I'm a I'm a real firm believer that what we bring when we come together online is the ability to share and present and give feedback to each other as a group. Because when you school your children at home, there's so much that you can do really well. But the thing that is missing is making presentations to other people, sharing your work, getting feedback, having community-type experiences. Those are just hard to create. I mean, as a homeschooling mom, I always, you know, found that challenging. And my kids would even say to me sometimes like, well, my writing isn't really that good. You just say it. You have to say that because you're my mom, you know? So, it's I, when I teach, I really value the like sharing and feedback time because I think that's a big part of what we are bringing into people's homes is hearing not only a teacher, but a classmate say, I love that line in the poem that you wrote. I love the way you did that on that illustration. You know, I I love that you didn't squeak on your recorder today, you know, whatever. I mean, in our foreign language classes, you know, being able to hear each other struggle through pronouncing something. So, it's amazing how well we can do that in a screen. So, yeah, that's what I truly value about this. I really do.
I think, you know, when we when we talk about instructors and parents, we consider ourselves faculty of friends, all of us collaboratively, right? Faculty of friends, helping, guiding our 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 students. And I love saying, you know, on my end of the computer, I see this. What do you see on your end of the computer? Because we are this connection. I mean, we're in your kitchens, we're in the family rooms. Actually, you're in my family room. And so, you know, this is really important. This sense of community is really important to us. And, you know, it's just how not I am gonna boast for the instructors, Dr. Erin, but because I need to. The instructors that we have, not only are they highest in their in their disciplines, in their fields, with masters and doctorates and double masters, but they're here for the reason of vocation, of ministry, right? And so, along with that, they're offering all of these beautiful classes to our families that are are life-giving. They really are components in building up the 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 body of Christ. And so, it's always a joy to come into one another's homes and sometimes even meet in homes and sometimes even meet in person for a hug even. And and, you know, someone coming through and saying, I'm gonna drive through your city. Can I stop for a hug? Yes. And that was it. So so it really is a beautiful community. And we just kind of thrive on on the love of one another and the love of Christ. So by the way, Caroline, Father Michael also plays tin flute.
Oh.
So I actually did an interview with him and he's like, I play the tin flute. And so, you know, there you go. Another fun fact about Father Michael.
Wow.
You might want to ask him, will you play your tin flute for us?
I play electric guitar, so I could just play along with him.
There you go.
One of my, one of my kids has an electric ukulele. Have you ever heard of that? He got that.
I was saving up for one of those, actually.
That was his Christmas gift. He cracked us up because the first thing he did was pull it out, hook it up to the amp and play for release on it. We're like, that's not what we expected out of the electric ukulele, but okay.
I got a normal ukulele. And the first thing I played was like a Metallica song, which is not what you'd expect.
Yeah. Well, Caroline, if you like ukulele, there's a there's a master ukulele player. His name is Jake Shimabukura. I don't know if you've ever heard of him, but with whatever your parents' rules are about the internet, you can Google Jake Shimabukura. And S H I M, that'll get you there probably with Google. We got to see one of his concerts live, and I had no idea I would be totally focused and transfixed by listening to and watching the ukulele for over two hours. I cannot believe what this man could do with that instrument. So if you're interested, I recommend like find a couple of hit on YouTube, one of his his concerts or something because he's really cool.
And if you're really interested, prior to taking British classics next year, the precursor of the ukulele, look up hurdy gurdy.
I think I've heard of him.
No, it's it's an instrument.
Yeah.
But it's amazing. It's an amazing instrument that was used when they would perform epic poetry. It's called a hurdy gurdy.
I just looked it up. That's so cool.
We we do some good stuff in our classes. Very interesting. So questions, Michelle, Caroline, Kira, questions for Dr. Erin or myself. Hi, Dad.
Oh, look at Sasha's dad. I'm so happy to see you. I I only get to see the kids. I love it when I get to see parents.
Yeah, I was curious about, I saw the Tolkien Book Club, and I think I'll probably sign up for that this summer, but is there anything else you're doing for the summer?
Oh, very good. All right. So and I had it on my list to talk about. So thank you for the reminder, Caroline. That's why students are young and have brains with great synapses. All right. So yes, we have several clubs here that are really, really good. And you said you you saw the Tolkien one, which is right here. One that I think is great, which Sarah Fathergill, which is one of our instructors from SRS is teaching, is, well, that didn't do what I thought it would do. That's really odd. It did that. Okay. It's where the sidewalk ends and the discussion begins. So Shel Silverstein, for those of us that are old like me, was the poet to read growing up. And so she's kind of like bringing that back aboard, which I'm very excited about. So if you, you know, if you wanted to take another one, I would highly suggest this one because I really, I'm a big fan of Shel Silverstein. And and a big fan of Mrs. Fathergill, too. And then, of course, there's other things here in STEM and strategy, but as far as reading goes, I would say this one would be another choice that I would pick. Of course, you have Anna Green Gabels, you have C.S. Lewis. I mean, there's a lot of book clubs here that you can do, and and they're open. Having said that, just thinking about that reminded me too, for your age group, Caroline, is we have, where is it? There is Jane Austen and the Phronima of Virtue. So if you're a Jane Austen fan, this particular class talks about the Orthodox virtue found in it. And how and it'll be highlighted. So Mrs. Kim Cox, who this is kind of like her wheelhouse, will be teaching this class. You can take it just one semester. You could take two semesters, and each semester is unrepeated, right? So you can take it as a year long class or just as a semester class, whether spring or fall. So that would be another one interesting if you're into like, let's read a book and see what it says. Another one that's interesting is Christian Themes in Popular Film. So this particular class for, again, the upper school by Dr. Alexander Titus, he's going to be teaching it, goes through various films of the 20th century, as you can see here, and then discusses the Christian themes within those. So you'll be watching the videos and then having analytical critique about those when it comes to Orthodox Christian themes and virtues found in those movies. So there's a lot of different things of that interest that I think you you would probably, based upon your personality, would pretty much really like.
I really, really like Jane Austen. I read Pride and Prejudice in like two days because I really liked it.
So this would be one. And of course, Mrs. Cox, she is a big Jane Austen fan, huge. And so she she definitely will, one of those will be Pride and Prejudice. I don't know if it's in the fall. Okay, it's in the fall. So you the Pride of Bridges will be in the fall. But notice that she you're going to be reading Sense of Sensibility, Persuasion, Pride and Prejudice. And then you're going to be talking about the film adaptation and then having a critical essay regarding that. So again, a lot of cool things for the upper schools, student with SRS. And again, you know, with our summer clubs, a lot of good things here, too. So, you know, gosh, it is kind of like going to the ice cream parlor and you're like, okay, so you have all of these toppings. Which ones do you want? And you're like, I don't know. There's so many. Give them all. So, yeah, we have a lot of toppings.
Well, I'm really excited. I think I'm gonna look into the Tolkien and the science fiction and Jane Austen stuff for sure.
Good. I'm glad to hear. And Mr. Nicholas or Dr. Nicholas Newman, he's also, and it's not up yet, he also is going to be teaching a year long Tolkien course on Orthodox Tolkien Red in the Orthodox Lens, in which he'll talk various things like Christlike Figures. You know, the various hobbits, how they reflect different saints and that kind of thing. But it's not on the website yet. By Monday, it'll be on there.
I'll definitely look into that. That's something for the pool.
Good. Any other questions, Miss Kira?
Yes, now I have two. Where where on the website are those book clubs? I don't think I've ever come across those before.
So are.
How much is that?
Yes. So our summer, I'm gonna go take you first to our Raphael, so I can walk you through that. We're part of Scolay Academy, of course, as you know, classical academic press. So in order to get to the summer courses, you're gonna go to Scolay Academy. And then in Scolay Academy, you're gonna go to Summer 2023.
So only the only the summer classes are listed just with Scolay. The rest of ours are listed out separately for this for the school year.
Correct.
So it shows up all they're all mixed in together for summer.
Right. So we have Orthodox teachers teaching these as well as everyone else from Scolay Academy. That's why, like I said, this one here I know is Sarah Fathergill. We also have there's a couple. I want to say that I would have to look through each one. But you can look and see who who the specific person is. Now, the cost, the cost for each summer club is $167. And that is for 10 to 12 hours of enrichment instruction. So there's not a formal grading process. Of course, there's a roadmap. There's assignments that, you know, like read till this page. But there is an official grading process. This is strictly for joy enrichment. And so $167 for 10 to 12 hours, depending on the course.
Yeah, because I if we can fit it into our schedule, I know Sasha would be interested in the Anne of Green Gables, as well as where the sidewalk ends, because funny enough, or coincidentally, we've been trying to get through that book this year during our we have, we try to have poetry finally once a week. And that's one of the books that we've been reading through this year. So.
So this one here, Emily Brigham, is amazing.
Oh, but that's, okay, so that's grade seven and nine. So that was for her.
And and this is the reason why this is, is because she expects everyone to have come already have read the books.
Oh, okay.
So it's more of a discussion. So you know, you have to kind of look at, I keep on forgetting, that's not hooked up correctly. You have to look at specifically what the instructor is saying, like this one here, two times a week, right? Is actually a total course that they're gonna read and discuss together. So it really depends on what book club and how it's set up.
Okay.
You kind of have to look at those and and make sure it fits, you know, the needs. There is a science one that's really interesting. Radioactive, where is it? Right here. He this is being taught by Dr. William Di Puccio, and he's Orthodox. And he's teaching this course called, you know, Radioactive, The Amazing World of Nuclear Radiation. So you know, there's some interesting courses here. I know there's another course coming up for you, Geography. Buffs. Mrs. Kim Cox will be teaching it called I forgot. How many of you guys remember Where in the World Does Carmen San Diego, the video game? Oh, good. Michelle, you and I are in the same age range.
Yes, I remember playing that in school.
So anyway, so she's doing a little spin off on that. Where in the world does Carmen San Diego? And now you can get it online for free it because it's just old technology. But anyway, she's doing a bit of a spin off on that. So that should be interesting. So again, now all of the summer courses are up yet, but they're gonna be trickling in as the weekend progresses.
Yeah, I've taken a summer course with Miss Sider Rose before, and it was really fun.
Yeah, this year, Mrs. Sider Rose isn't teaching any summer courses because she's working on an apps of a church. And so she's gonna be on site, you know, doing her iconography. So yeah, she'll be a little busy this summer.
Okay, I have to apologize to y'all because I have to run. I'm actually going to a live poetry event tonight, so I am gonna run, but I was so glad to meet you all. And please feel free to email us, me included. And I'll try to get answers to your questions as quickly as I can.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Erin.
Bye.
Bye. All right. Any other questions? Kira?
I do. Just one more question. What is the registration process gonna be like? I, you know, this is only our second year, so I don't remember. Where where do I go to register for her for the classes on Monday?
Okay, so on Monday, you all should have received an email that said, you know, make sure you have an account with us. Did you receive that email by any chance, Kira? Oh, are you frozen? I think she's frozen. Okay, we'll wait. I so dislike when that happens, especially with, you know, the kids are like, your mouth is open. It's like, oops. All right, we'll wait for her to come back. I'm gonna pull up that email. I'm assuming you got it, Michelle.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Did you do? Nope, that's not it. Nope, that's not it. There we go. I found it. All right. So when she comes back, we'll answer. So Caroline, you have a very similar personality to myself.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I, you know, all these classes, you know, I always think to myself, would I take it? If I would take it, then yes, let's put it on. Let's put it on the schedule.
Well, I would take everything if I could, honestly.
Right? So many toppings.
Actually, we work on the blocks of the schedule to make everything fit that.
I know, right? Um, the the astronomy class, Father Michael, I said, Father, will you will you please do that for the adults? He goes, Yeah, but who would take it? I said, I would be number one. And then hopefully a couple more would take it, too. But I definitely am gonna take it. So, yeah, it's fun. It's fun. It's always good to learn and keep on learning. And keep on learning. So I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'm gonna look into like the summer reading stuff, though. I I'm really big Tolkien fan right now. I just read The Lord of the Rings for the first time, and it was so good.
I know. You know, I had to grow up a little bit to really appreciate Tolkien, because when I read it first time, I was a middle schooler. And I was like, he describes every little single thing, the mushrooms, the this, the that. I'm like, oh, my goodness. But now, of course, having read it many times, I appreciate it a lot.
Yeah, I didn't like it. I read The Hobbit first in seventh grade, and I did not like it at all. But now I love The Hobbit.
All right, Kira, welcome back. Did you get this email from us?
Sorry about that. Yes, I did. And I did register and log in.
Okay, so then, after you've registered, if you're registered, what happens is when you go to a class that you want to purchase, right? You're gonna click on it. And right now it says enrollment opening soon, but what you'll see when it does open on Monday, there'll be a button here that says enroll.
Okay.
And then once you click that, you can start adding things to your cart.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just not active right now.
Okay, that is, maybe that's why.
Yeah.
I was a little lost. I wasn't sure.
No, that's okay. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anything else, ladies? No? Is that Sasha? Hi, Sasha. I heard you're a poet. So do you know that we have a program every year since I've taught, which is called Open Mic Night, and I ask students to come and present pieces of writing or art? And it happens at the very end of the year, and I would love you to come and recite some of your poetry. Yes? Dr. Erin will be there, too. All right, good. I'm glad to hear it. I know. I do that to everyone, Sasha. Don't worry. Like I said, we come into your house, you come into our house. That's just how it works. Hello. All right, well, any other questions? Any other questions before we go?
I think we're good. Thank you so much for all the information you have.
You're welcome. Thank you for hanging out with me. You know, I always enjoy our time together with parents and students, Caroline and Sasha. And so if you need anything at all, just email me or you can email, of course, Dr. Erin as well. But we look forward to a wonderful academic year next year. So Christ has risen from the dead, trampling down death by death into those in the tombs, bestowing life. Good night, everybody. Take care. Bye bye.